Just checking the microphone, we're good, okay, good. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett School Committee to order at 7:02. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. And we are going to jump right into our showcase. We've got some guests here tonight. And we'll have Dr. Cummings do some introductions.
Excellent, thank you. And so I'd like to call forward Mr. Sirowich and members of our FFA. And they are going to tell us a little bit about their trip to Nationals. As a reminder, you know, our FFA program has lots and lots of students in it. They have won national awards, you know, in the past. And so this is one of the great trips that they get to apply their learning and showcase their talents. So we're going to hear a little bit about it.
All right, hear me now?
Yep.
First off, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Zach Sirowich. I teach agriculture there. I'm also starting the new marine professions program. But this was an incredible year, a great trip. We had a great group of kids that went with us. For many of them, this was their third time attending. There were over seventy thousand attendees at convention this year from, I'm pretty sure, every state and territory.
Where we go in the Virgin Islands.
Mm-hmm. And the kids had the chance to network, attend different leadership events, and participate in some competition. They did a wonderful job representing themselves as well as their Narragansett community. That's all I have. I'm going to turn it over to Elena, our chapter president, and Jack, one of our chapter members, to share some more.
Thank you. My name's Elena Waters Kit. I'm a senior at Narragansett High School, and I'm the chapter president.
I'm Jack McLeKenny, and I'm a junior in high school. And I'm a member in the FFA.
Our trip took place at the end of October. Throughout the trip, we did a number of things. A lot, some of the kids participated in the competitions that they qualified for, for the national convention. And then there was also the expo and convention center, which is where a bunch of different colleges come to advertise their agriculture programs. And businesses talk about why they're there to support the FFA and agriculture programs as well. We, it was just a mix of different kids at different times. Were either doing the day of service, or, as I said before, competing. Three different people competed, I guess. There was a team of four who competed in milk quality and products. And then there was also a singular person who did extemporaneous speaking. And then one of our other members also was the flag bearer, who carried the Rhode Island flag across the stage in front of everyone who attended national conventions. So it's a very nerve-wracking thing. Milk quality and products team was myself, Gavin Jones, Abby Gibbs, and Addison Bonner. The competition consisted of several different sections, I guess. So we started off with the written exam, which was a series of multiple choice questions that we had to answer that related to milk manufacturing, the people who produce the milk, and how they do so. Then we went on to the problem solving, where we used actual, like, equations people would use to calculate milk fat percentages and percentages of cheese and other things like that. We then went to identify different types of milk. We had to identify the percentage of fat that they had. We did the same with different types of cheeses. And then we also had a section where we had to identify different defects in different milks, milk samples. And then our last part of the competition was the CMT, which is the California Mastitis Test, where we had to detect any infection in any of the udders of the cow. And then lastly, we had our team activity, where all four of us had to, we had forty minutes to prepare a presentation about how we were going to better help a certain farm solve their cleanliness issues. We did a bacteria swab on a gasket from one of the machines that they used to produce and manufacture their milk. It was pretty cool, but it was definitely a learning experience. One of our chapter members, Emma Robin, she participated in extemporaneous speaking, where she had, was it forty minutes? Thirty minutes to pick, like, one out of three topics, research it, and make a speech to present to a group of judges. I could never do that. It's a very hard thing to do. And then another one of our chapter members, Mackenzie Martin, she was the flag bearer. She carried the Rhode Island flag across the stage in front of seventy thousand people, very crazy. And now Jack's going to tell you about the convention and the expo center.
At the convention and expo center, there was colleges and businesses there for the FFA. You could sign up to get, to learn more about colleges, and learn to apply to those colleges. And also in the convention center, there were shops. They were doing, like, deals. And it was very fun. It was a good learning experience.
Very, very, very good experience for, you know, juniors and seniors in high school like us, to just see different types of paths of agriculture you can take. It's not all just farming and planting. There's also ag education. There's a lot of leadership and communication skills that goes into agri-science, not just, you know, what you think FFA would be. Like Jack said, there's a lot of stores. There's, like, Ariat. There was a lot of small businesses, lots of deals, lots of money was spent. But it was, it was really fun, and it was a good time for the entire chapter to just explore. And there was a lot of engaging activities, scavenger hunts, where you could earn different pins to put on your convention lanyard, which was pretty cool. So I have a bunch of cool pins. We both do. And then for the rodeo and daily activities, it wasn't all just competing. We also had a lot of fun opportunities. Do you want to talk about some of the fun things we did?
Sure. During some nights, we would go to Steak 'n Shake and have dinner there. And then one day, we did our day of service, in one of the pictures you can see there. And that was just helping clear burning bushes and invasive species in the woods of Indiana. And then another night, and during the days, we would scooter around. And that was pretty fun. And in that bigger picture right there, you can see we had our chapter dinner at
The spaghetti factory.
The spaghetti factory. That was pretty fun.
It's a, it's a tradition to go to the old spaghetti factory for our chapter dinner, and it's put on by our chapter alumni, so it's very nice. We all get to talk about our trip so far, recap, and just talk about our plans for the rest of the week. Food's always good. The atmosphere's really fun. We also went to a rodeo. I had the chance to go my sophomore year. We didn't get to go last year, but we did get to go again this year. It's super cool. It's not like something that you would see around here. It's not staged. They're actually competing on bulls and horses. It's kind of crazy. And yeah, like Jack said, we kind of just, when we had free time, we tried to spend it all together and include everybody. This year's group was actually really, really great with including everybody and having a great time. Yeah, it was, it was really fun, other than, you know, the competitions, which were also great experiences. And that's about it. We're all very grateful for the opportunity to go on this trip. Only about nine kids got to go from Rhode Island. Right, about nine kids? Ten or so?
From our chapter, it was ten.
From our chapter, ten kids got to go. I've gone for the past three years, and it gets better every single year because I just see it in a different way. Jack has also gone with me for the past three years, so we've got to experience everything. Was it, want to talk about it a little bit?
It has been a very fun experience. My freshman year, I also did the flag bearer. And that was cool. I got to talk to people that I thought I would never talk to. It was pretty fun. And then my sophomore year, I did milk quality and product tasting. And that was a great experience, too.
And that was pretty much the national strip this year. It was a very, very great experience, as it usually is.
That is wonderful. So I have the same question for each of you. Can you share what was, like, the most fun thing that you did, whether it was during the convention or at night, or anything? Love to hear from each of you, like, what was, like, oh, that's awesome. I'm going to remember that. What was super fun? Like, what did you really enjoy? One, one thing?
I think my favorite thing is that the hotel we were staying in this year had schools from everywhere. We got to talk with Puerto Rico, Iowa, Washington, and we got to just hear about what their school daily life is like, and it's very, very different. I thought our school was small. Washington has a total of ninety students in their public school, which is pretty crazy. And they only have one movie theater in their town, which was also crazy to learn about. But it was just cool to make a bunch of new friends that hopefully I'll continue talking to.
I think my favorite thing is hanging out with my friends in Indiana, exploring the expo, and competing in the competitions with each other.
Let me jump in here. For me, it's just watching kids be kids. And everyone is coming from many different places, and they all have so many different backgrounds. But it's truly remarkable to see everyone come together and put those differences aside, and, and just enjoy the, the time we're there together.
Well, it sounds like you really represented our school very well. We're very proud of you. Does anyone else from the school committee have any questions or comments for them?
I just want to say, I had to buy some milk today at the store. And when I came home and put it in the fridge, and then I sat down to read through your presentation, and I noticed milk defects. Now, is this anything I need to be concerned about?
Um, not necessarily. They actually used really interesting recipes to replicate milk defects. And usually, they're stopped right at the factory. But one of them was, like, garlic milk, when the cows eat something different than they're supposed to. It tastes garlicky and oniony. It's gross. And then sometimes it's watery and malty, but you don't have to worry about it being in your milk. Your milk should be fine.
That's reassuring. Thank you.
I wanted to thank you guys, too. I don't know if it was you or somebody else that did the presentation on Monday night at the town council meeting, but I heard from quite a few that it was the, the highlight of their night.
Awesome. That was me and my friend Addison Bonner. So thank you. That means a lot.
Thank you for doing that.
Do you think, are you going to go into agriculture or sciences, I think, going forward?
Personally, I don't think I will, but I think a lot of the skills and just, like, experiences from this entire organization, I will definitely be using, like, public speaking and just, like, leadership skills that I definitely didn't have freshman year. So I'm very grateful for-
So many life skills.
Definitely, one hundred percent.
Absolutely.
I just want to echo, thank you for presenting to us tonight. Sounds like you had a great time, and we're happy to hear it.
Thank you so much for listening.
And you did a great job with your presentation. It was very succinct, very clear. Loved the PowerPoint, loved the font size, loved the pictures. The pictures kind of paint a picture of, of the trip. And, and like everyone said, we appreciate you taking the time to come tonight, because we know you're super busy, and there's school tomorrow. So thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, of course. Mr. Sirowich made sure we were all taking group pictures throughout the entire trip, so we'd have something good for the presentation. We definitely captured a lot of the highlight moments of the trip.
All right. Well, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you for having us.
All right, so we're going to continue on with our meeting. Is there a motion to seal the executive session minutes from tonight?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye? Motion passes five zero. And we did not take any votes tonight in executive session. And it's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Uh, come on up and please say your name.
Yeah, you'd think I'd know, standing on this side, how to turn the microphone on. All right. Alex Menzies, 175 Indian Trail, Narragansett Town Council President, but speaking on behalf of the town council. I want to recognize Hannah Abrams, and congratulate you on being selected to serve as the student representative to the Narragansett School Committee. This role is a tremendous honor, and I know you will serve your town, your school, and your peers with great pride by listening carefully, speaking candidly, and offering insight, enriching every discussion. Your commitment to representing the student body with integrity reflects not only your character, but the values of the entire Narragansett community. On behalf of the town council, and the entire town of Narragansett, I want to thank you for taking on this initiative to serve and for your leadership. I have a service pin here. You get a special one, because it's bigger than anyone else is on the town council. Wear this pin with honor and pride, knowing the tremendous service you are providing this town. And I'll leave it over here, so as to not go up to the desk there. But thank you so much for your service and dedication.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? Okay. We are moving on to oral reports, and we are starting with the student liaison. So we will start with Hannah.
Good evening. November has and continues to be an exciting month at the high school. This past weekend, the NHS Theater Program presented its production of Your A Good Man, Charlie Brown. Their performances on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday showcased the hard work and talent of the staff and students in our theater program. In athletics, Mariners football advanced to the semifinals, where they played a strong game against Situate last Thursday. They won that, and they're heading to the Superbowl this Saturday at twelve against Davies. Also this month, NHS math teacher, Mrs. Volts, is beginning to conduct an action research project focused on strengthening our school climate. The project includes two initiatives to help us celebrate one another at school. Gansett Gratitude is an opportunity for students to share a note of appreciation anonymously or not with a faculty or staff member each month. Mariner of the Month is a chance for faculty to nominate students each month to be recognized for their effort, respect, and integrity. Not necessarily for their academic performance, but the character they show in our classrooms and hallways. Gratitude at NHS will be surveyed monthly to observe the positive impact of these initiatives on our school's atmosphere. Looking ahead, NHS PTO is hosting its annual Mariner Marketplace fundraiser Saturday, November twenty-second. That's the Saturday. It will take place at the high school from nine to three. Over sixty local vendors and artists will be in attendance, making it a great opportunity for the community to come together and get some good holiday, get some early holiday shopping done, and for students to volunteer at the school.
Thank you, Hannah. Any questions for Hannah? All right. Well, thank you very much. Okay, on to school committee reports. Do any members have a report to give tonight? Diane, you want to go first?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that CJ, Tammy, and I attended the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition Annual Breakfast at the Crown Plaza on October sixteenth. It's a wellness discussion, and the main speaker this year was Jeanelle Ty, who was from California. And she talked on what if health class was the most important class of the day.
Thank you, Diane. Dave?
Do you want me to do it?
Yeah, why don't you do it?
All right. So yeah, Justin and I actually attended this, this evening, the steering committee for the Narragansett School System AI Guideline Policy. And it was attended by, you know, educators, parents, administrators, some of our technology professionals, and, and Justin and I on the technology committee. Yes, and Hannah, students. In preparation, we had to review RIDE's AI guidelines, some studies from MIT, as well as, most importantly, a survey from the, or, I guess it's viewpoints from the parents of, of the Narragansett students, as well as the students' suggestions on, on what we should have for AI guidelines and policies. We're at the really early stages of this. But it's, my takeaway is, it's going to be one of the more challenging policies to draft, because the, the field is, is rapidly evolving. We reviewed policies from districts across the nation, and regionally and locally here in Rhode Island. And we even found that even some of these policies that are brand-new are already showing their age. So it's going to be, it's going to be challenging, but I was really impressed with the organization of the event, as well as the interest and enthusiasm from the educators, from the administrators, from the staff, and, and the volunteers that were in attendance. So AI is, you know, part of our everyday life, and getting some, some guardrails in early and guidance are going to be essential to, to help our students succeed, and our educators succeed.
Thank you.
I just want to add, thank you, Dave. That was a very informative and, like, covered everything. We have, seem to have a good working group here, and I really look forward to continuing to work with them in finding, steering our AI policy. So, thank you.
No, I was going to mention Mariner Marketplace, but they did an amazing job with that, so.
Actually, I did have a follow-up. The football game this, this Saturday, Cranston, right? And in Cranston Stadium at noon?
Yes.
Okay. I think I'll be there.
Great, thank you. Okay, we are on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cummings?
Great. I'm going to give most of my time to Gail. I do just want to give a shout out to our career and tech staff, and to Lauren for an awesome open house that we had. And so we had lots of interest from throughout the region, and with our own students in our career and tech programs at Narragansett High School. And so, how many visitors do we have? Well over a hundred? About a hundred and twenty-five students came to our open house to check out our programs. So we're really excited to welcome them to Narragansett High School. And with that, I'd like to pass it on to Gail, who is going to go over the RIDE accountability presentation. So this is RIDE, every year is required by federal law to review schools and to rank and rate them. So Gail's going to go over that. You know, I will just take a moment and say, you know, it, it is a time that is very much in flux in terms of federal accountability and all those rules and regulations. There have been some recent developments about dissolution of the Department of Education, which really, again, for the Rhode Island Department of Education and for districts, puts funding streams and all sorts of other pieces into question. So right now, we don't have enough information for me to be able to speak to it in any way in terms of effects on Narragansett. But we will give you, you know, keep you updated as we find out more information. And with that, I will hand it off to Gail.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So every year, I come up here and I tell you about our accountability ratings. And as Pete just said, this is required under federal law under the Every Student Succeeds Act. And I'd just like to point out that this rating is made up of multiple criteria points. So there's academic performance, achievement in, and growth, and ELA math, and also science, also English language proficiency. And then there are also points on student absenteeism, teacher absenteeism, suspension rate, and graduation rate, commissioner's seal, and post-secondary success. So multiple factors are brought in to come up with our final accountability rating. So I know this is hard to see, but you have it in your handouts. But this just looks like a, a report card, a sample from, this is not our rating, but just a sample of what an accountability rating would look like for a school. And I just wanted to note that this particular school would be considered a three-star school because of their rating on achievement and growth. So your rating is really based on what your lowest score is. So even though this school had a five star in student quality and student success, and in English language proficiency, because of that achievement and growth rating, they were considered a three-star school.
Right. So just to be clear, your, the highest score you can possibly get is your lowest rating in any area?
So I know these ratings have been out for probably almost two weeks right now. So Narragansett Elementary School earned four out of five stars. Our peer school earned three out of five stars, and our high school earned four out of five stars. I took some data from neighboring districts, so that you could see how we were doing as compared to our neighbors. And middle schools in general on the state received pretty much three stars. You can see our neighbors in South Kingston, North Kingston, Charahoe, Exeter, West Greenwich, all of their middle schools earned three stars. And then their, most of their high schools were four stars, and elementary schools were either between four and five stars. So I included that information with you. I had hoped the state would have had their, all of their reports out today, so I could have shown you statewide how many elementary and middle and high schools had how many stars, but they weren't out yet. So I wanted to at least pull that data for you for our neighboring schools. So specifically for our ELA achievement, so we earned, as a district, we earned three points. So our participation rate was a hundred percent. And we really do strive to get our students to school, participating, doing their makeup assessments and so on. Getting that high participation rate is crucial. And our administrators and teachers did an excellent job at that. So that was our, our ELA achievement. And then our next slide is more by school. So the first slide was by district for ELA achievement. Our second slide is by school. So you can see, for example, our elementary school earned three of the stars, three of the, the points. Middle earned two, and high earned three. So then that average is taken to give us what our district score would be.
And these scores are a two-year score. So I think it's seventy-five percent from the current year, twenty-five percent from the previous year. And so you might be looking at and going, well, all of our scores for last year were well up in the sixties. How could we only be fifty-seven percent? It's because they carry over scores from a previous year.
And that's how they figure out the growth as well. Next set of slides, the same thing for math. Our math achievement points, we earned two out of four as a district. And then by school, you can see, for example, the elementary school had four points, the middle had two, and our high school had two points. This year, which was new for us, is the science being- This year, which was new for us, is the science being added to our accountability. So, you may not remember that our, only of our students in grade five, eight, and 11 take the science assessment. So, those are the only three grades assessed. This is the first year that it counts towards our accountability. This is something that districts throughout the state are kind of struggling with their science scores. And in my last report, we talked about what we are doing to hopefully improve those scores this year and moving forward with high-quality instructional materials as soon as we have more to choose from. So, our science proficiency, we only earned two out of three points. And we know this is an area that, that we continue to work on, as do other districts in the state. And the last slide, I just wanted to put everything together for you so you can see our achievement in ELA and math and our growth and our science. But I also wanted to point out about our points that we received on student chronic absenteeism and teacher chronic absenteeism. And just to note that we received all of our points, this is a positive thing, for our teacher absenteeism rate. So, I wanted to point that out to you. That was really a huge achievement for us. So, the scores are out. They are public. You can go on to the RIDE site, and you can see any district that you want to and how they have achieved, how many stars they got, where they fall with the rest of their neighbors in their pack. And hopefully, RIDE will be releasing soon statewide how many elementary schools got how many numbers of stars and so on. And I can certainly get that information to you. Any questions on that?
So, we were working on the math. You know, kind of what happened with, how come we did the two?
So, our math continues to grow, and if you look at our scores this year, they're significantly up where they were the year before, and they, we are on a very nice growth trajectory in math. So, what you see reflected here are not the same as our pure RIDEcast scores that we went out over with you earlier in the year. So, I appreciate you pointing that out, CJ. So, this is an average over a couple of years. And so, it pulls us back a little bit because our scores from last year were already better than they were, right? But they still count. And remember that our SAT scores, right, which are, you know, a really important part of what we do are through the roof from last year.
Yes.
And so, there's lots to celebrate about our growth. But because the star rating kind of accumulates scores over time, it always lags a little bit behind our progress.
Yeah, because I thought, I know we were progressing with that.
Yes. No, I appreciate you pointing that out. Yes.
Gail, how does RIDE determine our post-secondary success? Or is that information we give to them, or do they evaluate it somehow?
That has to do with how many of our students go to college.
Yep. So, there are a couple of things that do, that are counted in that. So, one are the certifications they get through CTE, right? And so, we have a lot of students that do that. Two, how many AP and college credit classes they take, right? And those are, those are what they call as preparing you for post-secondary success. So, the label's a bit of a misnomer because they are not tracking our students in college. They're just projecting how well they will do in college based on the level of courses that they take while they're in high school.
And I found it interesting, as you pointed out, that, that in all our neighboring districts, our middle schools all got threes, and the high schools all got fours. And then there was a little variation in the elementary schools. So, it almost seems like it's predetermined. I mean, it seemed very odd to me that it was so consistent.
Yeah, that's why I'm interested to see what the rest, how the rest of the state did as well.
Right. And again, because it's over a couple of years, it's really high to maintain. We're getting there, but really reaching and maintaining that cut score to get to the four and five level, especially for a middle school where all grades are tested, right? And so, that's really challenging. And the elementary school, it's only grades three and four. At our high school, it's only grade 11 that counts. At the middle school, it's all four grades and all the cohorts. And so, that level of accountability in terms of having every grade tested is really challenging for middle schools to kind of break that kind of three-star barrier. We are very close to it, and I do anticipate us getting there within the next year or two. But again, it's a high expectation and one that we can and will be meeting, and we should have that high expectation. And so, we're making growth towards that.
And then just one other question. The committee of practitioners, are they still active? Or did they just, were they just involved to set it up in 2018?
I'm not sure if they have.
They are not still active, to our knowledge.
Okay. So, they didn't design the science?
That, we all knew the science was coming to be part of this.
Okay. But they changed the scale, one to three, and the others are one to four. So, that's why I was wondering if that committee of practitioners had something to do with that.
What do you mean they changed the scale?
It's the one to three points, and everything else is one to four. It's on this one?
We will have to ask them.
One, two, three, and ELA and math are one, two, three, four. And science is just one, two, three?
Oh, yeah, but that was, they always, they always planned to have science be part of the accountability system. So, I think when they rolled it out in 2018, it was the plan that by this time, science would be involved, and that's how many points it would be.
Yes, but I'm not sure why that scale is different, so we can find out for you.
Yeah, that is interesting. So, that's the story of the accountability rating. And I'll get you the, I'll get you the state data when we get it.
Any other final questions for Gail?
Well, I'll just make my comment that I make every year is I don't think it's a fair or accurate portrayal to judge the school based on their lowest rating of the, one of the measurement categories, in that they don't do some sort of average, rolling average or something. But I just sound like a broken record because they say it every year.
We need to get you on this committee.
Right. And we agree with you.
I completely agree because I've seen the growth personally at the elementary school. That's why I was surprised.
They were very close to getting the five stars. They were very close.
I've seen it. That's so. Doing the lowest is, seems unfair. And I know you had mentioned previously that the science was coming. So, you were projecting that to be a little bit lower, but that you would be building on that.
Yeah.
But thank you for putting in the, the rest of the districts in there for comparison, too. That's helpful.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Nice, clear presentation, very high-level overview, very clear. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Dr. Cummings, you have anything else for your report?
I do not.
All right. All right. Thank you. So, we're going to move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve consent agenda items CA 1B, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA 2C?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to the budget report. Karen?
Good evening. Expenditures for the four months ended October 31st, 2025, total $8,174,613. And that's 22.04% of our budget. Expenditures and encumbrances, total $29,847,121, and that's 80.45% of our budget.
All right. Thank you. So, we have, any questions for Karen? Okay. We have one business item for tonight. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the Narragansett High School music field trip to New York City from April 17th of 2026 through April 19th of 2026? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
So, Mr. Healy sends his apologies. He could not attend tonight. But they are very excited about this trip, and it is a trip that they have done before. And so, they will be headed to New York City where they will perform. They will be able to go to a Broadway show. They will be able to do a couple of, a couple of other highlights within the city. They do do some fundraising throughout the year to help support the cost of the trip. They have gotten three quotes from people, which I believe are in your packet. They are planning to go with Perkins Travel out of New Britain, which is a more local company who is also negotiating some of the prices on their behalf. And so, I do recommend to you to approve the trip. It is a great experience for, for our music students and a great opportunity for them to be able to perform in New York.
I think it's a wonderful idea. They always do.
The packet is very detailed and thorough, which is helpful because a lot of the questions that some of us would have, it's a very thorough, detailed itinerary and agenda and price and budget and very thorough. So, that's helpful. And they're anticipating about 70 students to go?
They are. Yep.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Peter, how many grades is this open to?
It's open to all, all, all grades.
Oh, fantastic.
Well, all high school grades.
All high school. Yeah, I said nine to 12. Oh, and how many years has this been going on?
As long as I've been here.
This is a longstanding.
So, they've been doing this for a long time. And again, it's very well organized. Dan and Sarah put a lot of energy into making this a meaningful and memorable experience for students. They are very thoughtful about student safety as they go forward. And so, it's very well-planned and thorough.
We didn't go to New York, but my son, we, and I was a chaperone on one of the trips. They're amazing. So, I'm biased.
Any other final questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes five zero. Any communications that we want to mention? And I just see a correction on the date in the packet. So, our December school committee meeting is Wednesday, December 17th, right? And so, do we have a firm date for the town council budget workshop? Is that the 15th? Okay. Yep. So, that's just the, the future meeting correction. That's all that is the, because you, you have listed in this December 15th is our regular business meeting. Yep, no problem. So, our regular business meeting will be Wednesday, December 17th at 7:00. And then the town council budget workshop, that's going to be on Monday, the 15th. And then is the start time 6:00 because they have their regular business meeting that night, probably? Okay. All right. That sounds good. Anything else before we do a motion to adjourn?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Then motion to adjourn at 7:45?
So moved.
Second.